Welcome, everybody, to the 2023 Town Meeting in the town of Jamaica, which is your town. What I'd like to do is I'll read the warning to open, and then directly go. We have our representative, Sabilius, here. She has other places to be because she represents other towns, but I want her to have full time up here with us. So that's what I'll do. I'll read the warning, and then we'll hand it over to the representative. Warning: The legal voters in the town of Jamaica, the county of Wyndham, and state of Vermont are hereby notified and warned to meet at 10:00 a.m. at the Town Hall, not the Town Garage. In said Town of Jamaica on the first Tuesday of March, March 7, 2023, to transact the following business and to act on the following article. Thus, the meeting is open, and I hand it over to Representative Sabilius.
Thank you. Love to start with applause. That's a good sign. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving me a few moments to speak at your town meeting. My name is Laura Sabilia. I am the new representative for the new Wyndham Two District, which includes Dover, Jamaica, Somerset, Stratton, and Wardsburg. And this is my first time at Jamaica Town Meeting, and I'm glad to be here. This morning, I want to tell you a little bit about the work that we are doing, the committee that I'm on. Take a few questions for you before I head out to Stratton. I've left some materials on the table that have my contact information, both my website, my phone number, and my email. The fastest way to get in touch with me is via text. If you're having a problem, the best thing to do is send me an email telling me your problem and who you've been trying to work with on it. And then I can take that email and move into state government. Before I get going on... Can folks hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Before I get going on the update, though, I do have a special presentation. Folks will give me a moment this morning. A resolution that has been passed in the House of Representatives. And I'd like to read that for you. "House Concurrent Resolution Honoring Raymond and Joyce Valentine for their enduring community service in the town of Jamaica. Whereas, for many decades and in myriad ways, Raymond and Joyce Valentine have been significantly engaged in the town of Jamaica. And whereas CAWS, the Children's Associates United for Special Education, was fortunate to avail itself of Joyce Valentine's leadership as the school representative from Jamaica and as the organization's president. And whereas, for over three decades, Joyce Valentine served as the reliable Jamaica Postmistress, was a Cub Scout leader, a public library trustee, and for many years actively participated in the community service organization now known as the Jamaica Benefit Society. And whereas Raymond Valentine's impressive resume of volunteer activism, including answering the alarm of the Jamaica Fire Department, and more recently, serving as a department's partner, spearheading cable television access through his pioneering service on the Jamaica Cable Committee, which included personally removing snow from satellite dishes, serving as a diversion board member, volunteering as a Boy Scout leader, and being an active member of the Masons. And whereas their joint community involvement was broad in scope and ranged from teaching ski lessons at Stratton to membership on numerous committees at the Jamaica Community Church, where Joyce Valentine taught Sunday School to the Eastern Star Bingo work, which financed scholarships for local students. And whereas Raymond and Joyce Valentine, who are each 92 years of age, will be joyfully and proudly recognized at the 2023 Jamaica Town Meeting for their innumerable special contributions to the community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate and House of Representatives that the General Assembly honors Raymond and Joyce Valentine for their enduring community service in the town of Jamaica, and be it further resolved that the Secretary of State be directed to send a copy of this resolution to Raymond and Joyce Valentine." So, I know that Joy said in October they will be married. Seventy-five years. Well, there is no way we are talking that. We can only go down from there. Let me give you just a few quick highlights of bills that are moving that have been traditionally of significant interest. Happy to take questions afterwards. And Mr. Moderator, he is right there, and I'm sure will let me know when time is up. So first, we have moving right now that has passed the House and the Senate, the FY23 budget adjustment. Of special note for me in that budget adjustment, the governor has proposed working with the Rural Caucus, of which I'm a co-chair, $3 million for helping rural and small towns that don't have a lot of capacity be able to access these pretty significant federal funding opportunities that have come to the stage in the last few years. So that is headed to the governor for his signature, and we anticipate that he will do that. The FY24 budget is currently under development. Just really briefly to let you know how does the budget, the state budget, get developed? The governor proposes a budget to run state government and then adds additional revenues to reduce or add programs that he thinks are priorities. That budget comes in, and it goes to the House first. And then the House takes testimony on the governor's budget, makes their own edits, et cetera. We pass it, and then it goes over to the Senate. Senate will go through the same process. Hopefully, the governor and all of the leaders are working all the way along on the budget and get signed at the end. And when the budget is signed, we leave the bill, and everyone breathes sigh of relief. So that, right now, is underway in the House, the budget. And Vermont is seeing pretty substantial revenue growth, largely due to the federal pandemic stimulus and recovery dollars. So that is under development. A bill that has gotten considerable amount of attention has passed the Senate. This is S-5, the Affordable Heat Act. This is very similar to a bill, the Clean Heat Standard, that was passed last year, voted by the governor. This, according to the Scott Administration's Public Service Department, Vermonters are paying up to $2 more per gallon for fossil fuels this year than they were in 2021. Pricing of fossil fuels is unregulated, and it is determined on the global marketplace. Vermonters with the means to do so are getting rid of or significantly reducing fossil fuels delivered by their local fossil fuel dealer. Vermonters who can afford to are investing in weatherization efficiency using biofuels or adding electric heat pumps to their existing current heating cooling systems. So not all Vermonters can access these types of clean heat measures to save money by reducing fossil fuel usage. S-5 requires that Vermont Heating Fossil Fuel Importer, so the first entity that brings fossil fuel into the state, deliver and help pay for cleaner heat options, in particular for lower and middle income Vermonters, and especially solutions that cut costs over time, like weatherization, heat pumps, and advanced heating. A similar standard for electricity has been in place in Vermont since 2015. This is something that I plan to have more in-depth conversations with, probably through online meetings as the session is progressing. So that's S-5, the Affordable Heat Act. It's passed the Senate and is headed over to the House. Universal School Meals. The House Ag Committee passed H-165, which would make permanent universal school meals, where schools in Vermont make school breakfast and lunch available to all students at no charge. Popular in Jamaica. The $30 million price tag may be proposed to come off the top of the education fund as opposed to being required to be included in your school budgets. Housing. Senator Keisha Ram Hinsdale has pulled together housing initiatives with and without Act 250 changes. Those are the big points of conflict, including proposals from Representative Bungerts in Manchester and Representative Sims in the Kingdom, and worked with her committee to add an additional element. So S-100 is called the Home Bill, housing opportunities made for everyone. And it is passed out of the Commerce Committee and is in the Senate Natural Resources Committee, where we will see what shape it leaves there before crossover. Crossover is when bills in the House and Senate have to switch. That's March 17. And we'll see what shape that bill is in then. Another very big proposal that's moving through, again, paid family and medical leave insurance, H-66. This would provide... It's passed out of one committee so far, the General Housing Committee. And if it's passed by the entire body, it would provide up to 12 weeks of wage replacement. I believe right now they're talking about 90% for Vermonters that need to take off from work for family and medical reasons. Right now, the proposal looks like a shared payroll tax of 55 cents. In addition, I would note, Jamaica resident Drew Hazelton has been up testifying, advocating for some funding to help resolve and address our emergency management issues. That would be in the budget if we are successful. That is also an issue that has gotten some attention from the Rural Caucus. Additionally, property appraisals. So all of the towns in Vermont are seeing their property appraisal, their property grant lists. And the CLA, which is a key part of our education property taxes, is getting really out of whack and needing to conduct appraisals. So many, in fact, that there is great concern that there's not enough capacity in the state to take this on. And there are significant tax consequences to not doing an appraisal. So the state is looking at what kind of systemic approach there could be to helping with these reappraisals for municipalities to try and add some capacity. Lastly, there are a number of proposals... Not a number. There are several proposals moving through in the House Education Committee related to the Carson versus Makin decision. This is a U.S. Supreme Court decision having to do with the Maine family. In that decision, Maine has a very similar choice situation to Vermont, where some parents are afforded the opportunity to have school choice for their students. But our constitution in Vermont, like in Maine, prohibits your tax dollars from being used to pay for worship. So compelled, the compelled laws. And that is what a religious school is considered to be, is paying for compelled worship. And so that's been prohibited, both in Maine and in Vermont. So the Carson versus Makin case at the U.S. Supreme Court said, number one, you do not have to offer school choice. Number two, when you do, you may not then tell a parent that they may not choose a religious school. And so that has created a big conflict for us in terms of our existing school choice policies and our constitution. So there are several bills that... Two that are pretty significant that would have us look at the entire system and restrict funding to public institutions only, but provide a pathway for independent approved schools to be eligible for public funding. And that has gotten a significant amount of attention, and I've been actually holding community forums on that. The bill that is actually moving is much less consequential. And folks would probably best generalize it as kind of a wait-and-see approach. It says, movement like our religious schools to attest that they will not discriminate against students and staff if they receive public dollars. Likely, very much likely to end in the Supreme Court as well. So that attestation piece looks very similar to rules at the State Board of Education. Was introduced out of the... It was introduced into the House Education Committee on Friday. Again, we're very close to crossover. So that is the bill that is my sense will be moving. So with that, that's my high-level overview. Happy to come and talk to folks again. Happy for folks to reach out with questions. Do you typically take questions, Mr. Moderator?
You have listened for 10 minutes, and it's up to the body. Would you like to open it up to some questions to the representative?
Yes.
All right, you want to vote this? All in favor of wanting to have a question? Time with the representative, please raise your hand. All right, very good. All those not wanting to have a question, time with the representative. Ed, looks like you're gonna have questions. So who's first? Paul, I saw you first.
Laura, you had mentioned that the Senate five that's going through is going to have some benefits. It also sounds like from the opposition that it's gonna cost us 70 cents a gallon. So that the people that is allegedly trying to help are going to pay the price for it helping for some time before it starts to help. Can you address that?
So that 70 cents is a number that the Secretary of Natural Resources has put forth that passage of this bill would cost in order to implement the number of heat transitions that are included in the Global Warming Solutions Act in order to meet thermal emissions reductions. In, I believe, I believe it's not over any period of time. It's like lump all of this. And it also presumes that the situation does not continue to get worse or better. As I said, $2 a gallon more in the last two years. So it's a dollar more this year, and it was a dollar more the year before. So the... What I'm worried about, what I am worried about is seeing what happened with the telephones. That system happened similarly around fossil fuels. So what I'm talking about is we have a system that's really important, the telephones, that saw some competition and improvement with broadband and cell. And so in places where it was profitable to do so, broadband and cell has really grown. And in places where it wasn't, people are still reliant on that landline telephone. And that's becoming more and more dangerous because it's not as reliable at all as it used to be. So folks, rural folks, poor folks, are being exposed while folks with means are taking care of the situation and shoring up their safety. That is exactly what I am worried about happening with heating fossil fuels. So as we see, in Vermont, to reduce our emissions to zero will have no effect whatsoever on global warming. It won't. I mean, it's just a reality. However, in larger places, larger states, other countries that are taking those actions, when they act, it shifts markets. It shifts how things are bought and sold. It shifts behavior. Those actions will impact Vermont. And so I believe we have to act and start moving to keep up with those shifts that we're seeing. So I don't know if I've answered your question. Happy to talk more about it, and I think we'll probably have an opportunity to have a couple of public forums on it.
I think that would be a help. Somebody, yes?
Hi, just a quick question related to the education funding model using the CLA and the continued rise of cost. I'm curious. I know that there was the study done to see how can we possibly redesign what that funding model looks like. But I haven't heard of any next steps or any actual ideas that are coming out of that. Is there an update related to the funding shift or funding free change?
So I think what you're talking about is pupil weighting.
Yes.
And the pupil weighting was inaccurately calculated for about 20 years, significantly harming rural students, poor students, and affecting all taxpayers across the state. Your former and current legislator have led the efforts to get that fixed. We did finally pass that last year, but it's coming in over time. While that is coming in, one of the other things that really drove up our property taxes, which is the excess spending penalty, which was tied to that inaccurate weight, has been suspended. So it's coming in over the next three years, four years.
Other question? This is your chance. She's here now live.
Thank you, Laura. I'll come back.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right. We'll get back to the business at hand. The first article is to elect a moderator for a term of one year. Would you run that for me? The moderator steps aside. And so would you run the meeting to choose a moderator?
I will take nominations for moderator for the term of one year.
I nominate Greg Jolly.
Second nomination.
Seconded. Any other nominations? All in favor of having Greg Jolly be our moderator for the term of one year, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand. Sorry. Ayes are good, too. Any opposed? All right, ayes have it. Hands have it.
Thank you once again. What I'd like to do before we move on to the second article is just do a little business here. Explain a few things. Have one or two announcements because this is the time where we're gonna have most people hear the announcements. So let's proceed that way, and then we'll go on to the article number two. So one thing I want people to know is that the meeting is run by Robert's Rules of Order, which have been amended by the Vermont Supreme Court. So if anybody's interested in, there's a new addition out. You can dive into it, and there's some real great arcania in there which I hope I never have to deal with. Anyway, so one thing I want to make sure everybody has, in case we have a ballot, that everybody has their packet of colored paper. Everybody who's a resident of the town has to sign in over here in order to get this. Therefore, legally able to make a vote. This includes voice votes. If you own property in the town, but you're not a resident, you cannot vote. Nature of Vermont law. Okay. So when we... My process is pretty simple. I'll state the article. Someone will move it from the floor. It will be seconded. I restate the article, and that will open it up to discussion. We'll go through the discussion. At some point, somebody can call the question. I will then ask for 2/3 of a vote. If 2/3 of the body vote to close the question, we close the question. I restate the article, and then we vote on the article. Now we can do a voice vote. If it's too close, I'll ask for a hand vote. Or if I have seven residents who want to go to a written ballot, then we will go to a written ballot and we'll vote. When we... If we do that, what I'd like is have people come down the center aisle, make your vote, and then go up the side aisles. It just makes the vote easier. And when you're up here, just be aware of the recording devices and cords and all that. Just be careful. I'd also like to let people know that this meeting is being recorded by the Bratton Borough Community Television. You can watch it later this week when you're having insomnia on Comcast Channel 1079 and 1078, Southern Vermont Cable, Channel 10, or online at brattv.org. For anybody who's going to speak, we've tried this before, and I should be better about this. Please, when I call on you, could you stand up, state your name, and then proceed with your question? If we're having a discussion, I will recognize you in order that I see you. And if you want to have a second question, you have to wait until everybody has had a chance at asking their first question. I just want to be very clear about procedure here. All right, everybody's got their packets. Everybody kind of knows the rules of the road. I'd like to recognize Ed here about the 911.
Ed, the... Most of you unfortunately are locals or live near us close to the city. Homeowners. But as more houses get built, as the trees keep growing, and your little sign that said, you know, 1341 West Hill Road or whatever it is, gets, you know, hurt by the elements and falls down and faded. Sometimes I don't know if you have the other roads. It's really dark. And when we get a call... Sorry, I'm speaking for the fire department in case you're wondering what I'm doing. We get a call, and we have no idea where your house is. So there's a couple of things on page 54. The article or letter that the town talks about putting new signs out. If you guys can, you know, get new signs done. Or some ones, reflective ones would be a better option so as we're driving by, we can see it. The other thing is if you have neighbors, tell them since there's a bit of the town here or whatever it is. So please tell everyone to do that. The other thing we would also ask, if you have an alarm company, if you could either tell us the passcode, if you trust us with the passcode, then you can make sure that your caretaker has the passcode and at least give us his name and number, their name and number, too. So we don't accidentally break your door down. So it's a lot cheaper to give us, you know, have a little call box or a lock with code that we can access or something else than replacing the door. We've done that three times this year already because we have to go into the building when there's an alarm because there's no one there. The caretaker did not know. That is our only choice. And doors nowadays are very expensive. And we went, you know, just as an example, we went to one house four times in one day, and it was the same alarm going off. And we didn't have any information on how to shut it off. So we ended up unplugging, which is not a good sign. And that was because no one could control it. And that was the homeowner gave us permission to do that by the after. It costs a lot of effort. You know, we are a volunteer department, so we're being waken up out of bed, you know, doing things, working. Not that that's not what we signed up for, but when we're going for four times in a row in a town, it's not fun. Any questions, Ken?
No.
No?
I was just saying.
You're what?
I was just saying.
Oh. No questions? All right, tell all your neighbors.
Very good. Thank you. Just a few more things, and then we'll get into the body of the meeting. Number one, as Representative Sabilia said, she has left the sheet updating everything legislative that she talked about. It's over here on the table. There is a handout from the Jamaica Historical Society, which people might find interesting. And there is also the West River Modified Union Educational District 2023 Annual Report. You can read that while you're having insomnia watching this. I'm eating on TV again. And finally, just for people's information, on page four of your town report, on the upper left-hand corner, meeting schedules. You have the Select Board meeting, the Planification meetings, the West River Modified Union meetings, and also the Jamaica Library Trustee meetings. That's all usable information. If you have questions, you can also go on the website and find, make sure that the meetings are actually happening. Anything else? Oh, by the way, this is your Select Board. Behind me, behind you, is the Select Board and JP and also our first constable. Yes. I dropped something. Oh, yes, I can't remember the meeting about this. Okay, so knowing that, let us proceed. Article number two, to review the town report. Somebody move this article, please?
Don't move it.
Thank you, Ed. And second. Very good. Patrick. Excellent. So what the second article is, is to review the town report. Discuss. Discuss. Ah, yes.
Mary Carlin. I'm just looking at mud season 2022. It's been a bad year, but it says here that it was $52,000, $52,751. And we see, and there's nothing for the year 2023.
What page are you referring to?
This is page 17.
Page 17.
My question is, is it taken from the highway department somehow? Or is it taken from the fund? Because there's nothing for it for the year.
I guess so. Last year, I would say, everybody knows it was a pretty tough mud season. Came on fast and early. We did have some pretty significant expenses. There was some rumors, so to speak, that there may have been some, an emergency declaration by the state that we could have received some additional funding reimbursement from that. That turned out to not happen. We set aside a separate line item last year to kind of track it specifically for that. This year, it is integrated into the actual highway budget, into the winter materials budget, and you'll see a fairly large jump in there. We'll talk more about the budget if we want to, but there, some of that is included in there. And also, the cost of materials has gone up significantly, too.
Any other? Yes? CJ?
CJ King. I just had a question on page 46 for the Planning Commission. I'm curious where the 500-kilowatt solar array is planned for, and which 130 homes will benefit.
Does anybody?
Well, I could answer that.
Okay, please.
I mean, there are some Planning Commission members here, but.
Why don't you start?
They, the solar array is proposed to take, be installed in the former gravel pit down by where the, where the trailer park is. I don't know.
Tony's Lane.
Tony's Lane, down in East Jamaica. It's a site that's almost perfect for it. I mean, it's been gone, it's gone through a lot of its permitting process already. It has not actually begun construction yet. I still believe they're in the process of getting the certification public good. The homes that it will generate power for, that power will go back into the grid. So I mean, it's hard to, it's like water in a bathtub. I mean, where did the water come from and what water is in there now? It's, it goes into the grid, basically. So it's all helping to elevate the grid. And I'm sorry, Charlie, I see you there now. So if you wanted to add something, Charlie Peck on our.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm Charlie Peck. I'm a member of the Jamaica Planning Commission, and I was involved in the Planning Commission in a similar response to the citing proposal. The certificate of public good has been awarded, and the project will be built by Norwijk Solar. And Greg is correct about their location. I believe that the figure, it will benefit 130 homes from a press release that was put out by Norwijk Solar. And I think that that's probably statistical averaging. I can't speak directly to it, but it's probably because the project would generate, when it's generating, when the sun is shining, it's producing electricity, producing enough electricity to serve approximately 130 homes. I understand for Norwijk Solar that they can't begin, there's a deer yard close to that project site, and because of the conditions attached to the climate, they can't begin construction until April 15th. Sometime after April 15th, I think you will all begin to see. It's not easily visible, and the solar panels themselves will not be visible at all from the survey. But probably there was some construction traffic in there after this.
Thank you. Any other questions, observations, corrections? Yep, yes, okay. You've got the number yourself.
Well, now, Mary Carlin. It says the town hall dinner. And if you had $500, and you spent 30, so are you ready to swing into town hall? So you're just leaving that correction attached. Can you do it?
Okay, we're done with pickles. We're done. Excellent. Excellent. Are there any other? Yes, sir. Yeah.
Right, I answered one, so yeah, you're talking. By the way, the other reason why we need 91 addresses, I forgot to mention this, but that's not one funny one now. But it's because when Alexa doesn't come on our calls, we don't know who's address is there. You know, it happens where she knows everyone. So then when new people come in, she's like, I have no idea who they are. Anyway, I know that especially with the Planning Commission, there's a lot of stuff about talking about water and septic, which is a huge thing to bring all these businesses that are going to come to our small little town to do that. But one of the things that affects the businesses now and the future businesses like Patrick's and Jessica's, besides water and septic, is the fact that no one can walk in the wintertime in our town. If you drive around, thank you. If you drive around Townsend, we call it, they don't count because they have like kind of foot sidewalk. They have machines that actually do it. And I don't know if you've ever seen our machine. I don't know if you've ever been here after a snowstorm. It's a 1942 John Deere with a little plow on it that has skids on it. So that means as it's going through, it's leaving an inch of snow or ice on the ground. And then they throw more dirt on the ground to make it not be slippery. But anyway, nevertheless, there's no parking on the street because there's between the white line and the burn or the sidewalk there's a huge mountain of stuff. You've all seen it, right? Yesterday, the panel was clearing all the snow out of it. So I've done a lot of research, and I'm willing to do a lot more. And there's two options of doing it. One is to take $155,000 of the sidewalk funds and use some of that to buy a cool machine. Or the other thing is to increase the budget by about $70,000 to buy a machine that will do that. I've done the research. There's a Ventrac, you can all look it up on your phones. Ventrac that has all sorts of different plow attachments. It's got a cool little sand remover or even slight snow. It's got a thing in the back that you put on. You can put either grime or pet-free friendly salt that will take the ice out of it. So I think it'd be worth for our village, as well as everyone in the town when they come, those actual places to park. So I would like to, I don't know if this is.
Well, you'd address it at a Select Board meeting?
Or we can.
You can.
I would like to, if possible, entertain or whatever, have the monitor entertain motion to increase the budget by at least $70,000 to do research to buy a machine that will clear arsenal property.
And we can do that when we get to the actual budget session.
I'll remember that.
And one thing, the one thing that when we get to any type of budget, remember, what the body can do is it can change the amount that is being appropriated. You can push it up or you can drop it. But you cannot change what the money's being used for. You can't say, well, let's take that $50,000 and take it out of sidewalks and put it into a machine. You have to dedicate it, and that's something, that's why you have board articles. So it's something you're going to be dealing with with the Select Board in their next budget. Yes?
This is, I'm Kate Harris, pardon my ignorance, but for the solar project, who is paying for it and who's getting the revenue?
Who's, the solar project?
It's on private property.
It's on private property, and they will.
The town is required to go through as party to the permitting process, but the town has really, outside of that, really nothing to do with it.
So the 130 homes, and whoever is doing it, know the project dropping the little sentence in from.
Into the electric grid, just. It's a business. I mean, they certainly will be.
It's a private business. So it's not a municipal power plant. Okay, any other observations, corrections? Yes?
Karen Ammenden. A little later on, we're on Article 5, 6, and 7. We're voting on a 1% tax that could help pay for that snow removal machine.
Okay.
In town.
Very good, and we'll bring it up at that point. That's an option, but that's not the subject matter for this. Any more observations on the town report reviewing? You can call for questions.
Call for questions.
Oh, thank you. Okay, second?
Second.
All right, very good. So I will restate the article, which is to review the town report. All in favor of saying you're satisfied reviewing the town report, please say aye.
Aye.
People who don't want to stop and want to continue going into the details, please say no. Any abstentions? Article two is done. All right. Now we move on to Article 3, to elect the following officers as required by law. So let's go to Article 3A, to elect a select person for the term of three years. Do I hear any? And this is a position that presently Greg Melman's in. Fault. Do I hear any?
Andy Coyne.
Andy Coyne has been thrown into the, into the mix. There's been a second.
Just a second.
And are there any other nominations? Yes? Greg Melman's has been nominated.
My desire is to run for a one-year term, so I respectfully decline.
Very good. Anyone? Yes?
I nominate Derek Al.
Derek Al has been nominated. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Very good. So at this point, for the three-year position, you have the choice. Oh, yes.
How about, can they stand up?
Oh, yes. Is Derek here? Thank you, and Andy Coyne is here. These are your two candidates. All right. Now then, magic colors. We're going fluorescent pink. Vote for either Mr. Coyne or Mr. Al. And I please, his name is spelled A-H-S.
L.
L.
Al.
Al, okay. So there's your choice. Please come down the center.
Can you move the box to the center?
Uh, I don't want people around this.
But it's better to do that than to run it down the path.
All right.
Just a second.
It makes better sense to.
Hey, do it together.
I learned it from yours, just.
Okay. The results of your voting are. Andy Coyne received 31 votes. Mr. Al received 35, which means in order to win, they needed 38. So you'll have to vote this again, unless.
Someone got up? Uh, we might just was, is in the one year.
So you're removing yourself.
I removed myself and handed it to the.
Very good. Now then, Mr. Al has removed himself from the vote. Mr. Coyne is now the only person who's up for the vote.
I'm going to put a monitor to cast a vote for.
I have to ask, are there any other? You can't jump this one on me. Are there any, are there any other candidates? Hearing none, I will ask the moderator.
Ask the moderator to vote for Andy Coyne.
Okay, and I can do that. Yeah, second? Very good. Therefore, all in favor of this move, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you, Mr. Coyne. The vote is yours. Now then, let's move on to the next position, which is a select person for the term of one year. This is the one. Presently, it's Mr. Talbert. Whoa! Slow down. I thought this were on B, we're not on BNC. One at a time. Presently, Mr. Talbert has that position. Do I hear any nominations for a select person for one year?
I would like to nominate Tom Talbert.
Tom Talbert has been nominated.
I respectfully decline the nomination.
Mr. Talbert should plan his nomination. Are there other nominations?
I would like to nominate Derek Al.
Derek Al's been nominated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, thank you. Any other nominations?
I'd like to close nominations.
All in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the moderator will cast one vote for Mr. Al for the position of one year. Congratulations. Anybody who's selected at the end of the meeting, please go over to the clerk's desk, and you will have the oath of office minister, which will make you official in your position. Let's go on to C here. Now, C. We got to. Select person for a term of one year. Presently, I think Andy Coyne has the position. Andy now has the three-year position. Do I hear nominations for this one-year position? Yes. Greg Melman's has been. And you accept.
I accept.
He accepts, very good. Are there other nominations?
Move.
Ha, I can't contend with that. Anyway, so nominations have been closed. All in favor of Greg Melman's having the select person position for one year, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, sir. Okay, right now, we're going on to D. And this is a lister for the term of three years. And presently, it's Pat Melman's who has it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do I, do I have nominations?
I would like to nominate Pat Melman.
And is she here?
She's not, but she accepts the nomination.
That's one thing I'll do. If somebody's nominated and they're not here, I just want to make sure they won. I don't want them surprised. So are there other nominations for the position of lister?
Move for nomination.
Thank you. All in favor of Pat Melman's being your lister for one year, three years? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. All right. E, First Constable for a term of one year. Presently, it's Rob Willis. Do I hear nominations?
Nominate Rob Willis.
Very good, a second? Any other nominations?
I'm going to close nominations.
Nominations have been closed. All in favor of Rob Willis being your first constable, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. Congratulations, Rob. Ah, we can move on to F. Now we're cruising here. Second Constable for the term of one year. Presently, it's Ben Williams, correct? Very good. Do I have nominations for this position?
Ben Williams.
Ben Williams has been nominated? You'll be okay with that? Very good. Ben Williams has been nominated.
Second.
Second.
Second, thank you. Thank you. All in favor of Ben Williams being your second constable, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. Uh, G, Trustee of Public Funds for the term of one year. Presently held by Rob Willis. Do I have a nomination?
Nominate Rob Willis.
Second?
Second.
Anybody want to put up another name?
No, I just said second.
Oh, very good, very good. Dan?
Move to close nomination.
Very good. Nomination, opposed. All in favor of Rob Willis being your trustee for public funds for one year, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Excellent, let's go. A, Agent of D to D Land for the term of one year. Rob Willis is presently in that position. Do I hear nomination?
Nominate Rob.
Second?
Second.
Move to close nomination.
Nominations have been closed. All in favor of Agent for D Land for one year, Rob Willis, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Now, we move on to I, Library Trustee for the term of five years. Presently, it is Janet Hamilton, whose time is up. Do I have a nomination for the five-year position at the library?
I nominate Becky Entel.
Becky?
Entel.
Entel. Entel.
I second the nomination.
Very good. Are there other nominations for the five-year position at the library?
Move to close nomination.
Now, I'm getting... No monopolies. I want a chorus by the end of this thing. Very good. All in favor of... I'm sorry, ma'am.
Becky Entel.
Becky Entel being the five-year position to the library trustee? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Congratulations.
Thank you, Becky.
All right. J, library trustee for four years of a five-year term. So do I have nominations here?
Well, right now, it's Michael Connor.
Correct. So you nominate him? And Connor, you're good to go? All right, very good. Michael Connor's been nominated.
Move to close nomination.
Yep, second.
Yep. There we go. Just keep moving. People are saying, okay.
Close nomination.
Thank you. All right. Uh, so, voting for the library trustee for four years of a five-year term, Michael Connor, please say aye if you agree to this?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. Uh, okay. There's a lot of library stuff going on. Library trustee for a term of two years. Presently, it's Bonnie West who holds this position. Do I hear nominations?
Nominate Janet Hamilton.
Janet Hamilton has been nominated. A second?
Second.
Second, and move to close nomination.
I had a... I had ears...
Sorry?
I nominate Keegan Eaker.
Who?
Keegan Eaker.
Keegan Eaker. Ooh, we had a runoff here. Okay, so, paper ballots. We're going for, uh, no, just going to orange this time.
Do we have to vote? Can we do by vote?
No, no, this is two people. No, I... Who, are there seven people who want to vote by paper? All right, we'll do a floor vote.
Is there ever a time where someone can stand up and say who they are?
Yeah.
They can, they can identify themselves, but they can't say anything why they want to do it. Because that's campaigning, and this is a legislative body.
Can anybody say?
No. Gosh, that's campaigning. This is a legislative body. You can't campaign. It's also a polling place. So you can't campaign, you're a polling place. Please, the two individuals who are, uh...
Janet's not here.
And Bonnie's not here. Oh, Janet's not here, I'm sorry.
Can we have the spelling of the candidates' names?
So my name is spelled K-E-I-G-H-A-N, and my last name is Eaker. Spelled E-A-K-E-R.
Excellent. Now then, I'll ask just one more time. Seven people want a ballot vote? You want to do it from the floor? Uh, no, I gotta, hey, let me see hands. One, two, plus, you got it. The orange, so it's either Janet Hamilton or Eaker. Please vote orange. Ballot is open. Okay, here we go. To win, that was right. Good eight votes were needed. Janet Hamilton received 30. The Eaker got 38. Congratulations. Okay, well, down, I was asked to slow down, so... Yeah, the adrenaline's burning up. So we're going on to the last of these, which is L, library trustee for the term of one year. And presently, Alice Abrams was in that position. Do I have nominations? Yes?
Nominate Karen Lake.
Karen? I prepared itself.
Nominate Janet Hamilton.
Janet Hamilton's been nominated? Yes.
I nominate Betsy Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, she's, okay, we have another vote. Any other nominations?
Who was the second one?
Uh, who's?
Betsy Thompson, T-H-O-M-A-S-O-N.
And the other nominee is Janet Hamilton. Prepare your ballots. Let's go for, oh, what'd he say? Yellow. So Janet Hamilton, or Betsy Thompson? Down the middle? Polls are open. All those who wish to vote, that's open. Okay, polls are closed. What's the poll announcement? About voting? Okay, if any neighbor would wish to vote on a vote like this, but for some reason cannot physically get up here, do not have your neighbor take your ballot up. Ask one of the justices of the peace to do that. That is their legal responsibility. You can't have somebody else vote for you. But a justice of the peace can cast your ballot because it's part of their job description. So please be aware of that. And there, Rob Willis is, I'm the JP, but since I'm moderator, that doesn't work. Claire Robinson, Karen Amington, so just send word up.
Heather.
And Heather. So send word up, and we can take care of you. That's okay. So we'll figure it out. Just actually, come to me if you've got a question, and we'll give you word. So thank you. The results of your voting for the library trustee. To win, you need 38 votes. Janet Hamilton received 33, and Betsy Thompson received 33. So, well, we can vote again.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, so here's what, here's what happens. We can go through three ballots. At the end of three ballots, if nobody has won, the person with the least number is dropped. Therefore, by extension, the person who's left would be the trustee. So, let's see if we can break the tie. Green.
We only have one more color, so...
This is not here?
She's, she's talked to me. Yes, so she's, Janet is fine to be nominated. So, green.
Green, let's go. Green means go.
Yes, green means go. Down the center, round the sides.
Don't know. Well, they didn't know that was the answer.
Your second vote. Leading 38, Clay McCracken. Betsy Thompson got 30, Janet Hamilton got 37.
I submit.
With this gracious submission, you have voted Janet Hamilton on as your trustee for... Thank you all. Okay, yes.
Can I say?
Yes, please.
Can I say hi? Hi, Jennifer Joy Duque. Um, thank you to Alice for her many years of service at the library board. Thank you to the renewed interest in the library. I'm going to say, I think it has something to do with our new librarians. Did you say that again? I'm sorry? I didn't hear what you said. I said, "Thank you for the renewed interest in the library." We've gone many, many town meetings, and no one wanted to serve on the board, so... And I credit our new librarian, Susan, for the renewed interest. And who is Susan?
I knew my bird.
You do not have to be on the board to come do the heavy lifting. There's a lot of heavy lifting. Books are heavy, so come on in, join our meetings. We are open and welcome, so please come. We want all the help we can get.
Here, here.
Yeah, as a library trustee, though, I would like to also thank Bonnie West.
Very good. Now, Mr. Tolbert should be recognized also.
Mike.
He's leaving the select board after all these years of service. Five years? His sentence is up? He was a free man. Paul, you told me something, I forgot what it was. Oh, it was, yeah, it's okay, good. I did remember.
We're actually in grief. That's why. We are in shock and grief.
All right, that means we're done with Article 3, and all its subdivisions. So now we work down to Article number five. Article number five. Shell to Town assess a 1% tax. Numerical order is not correct. Anyway, since it's not a court, you already finished it. Let me move on to Article 5. Shell to Town assess a 1% tax on sales pursuant to 20, oh, jeez, 24. Vermont statute...
State statute.
Annotated.
Annotated. Section 138, paragraph B.
So move.
So move, second?
Second.
All right, so what we're gonna discuss is Article 5. Shell to Town assess a 1% tax on pursuant sales. Sales pursuant to 24... You got it, written here. Is there discussion? Yes. Yes, I just did. Do you want to start?
Well, I have something.
Go for it.
First of all, I want to ask the trust of select board and have them explain to us how that's going to benefit the town and what that first one means. Each one individually meaning.
So this came up, um, as you remember probably that last year, we had this, or some variation of this on the, uh, on our warning. We've, over the past few years, had seen, or the board has seen that this is an opportunity possibly for the town to raise some incremental, uh, income, revenue. Um, we, that, last year proposed it, not exactly the same as it is now, but we, um, took feedback out of the meeting that, uh, last year's town meeting, that we need to break this down as much as possible. This is what the law allows us to break it down. So this is a 1% tax on the three, next three articles that we'll be voting on. A 1% tax that will, goes into the state tax coffers. We get 70% back as the town for each one of these individual ones. Um, that money we anticipate, if things pass, would go into our general fund. There's not a specific project or anything at this point. Um, we're looking at an estimated amount of money, um...
Article 5. So this would be Article 5.
Oh, okay. So I'm trying to get my, um, or if you want to...
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, so, um, thank you, Terry. Terry's given us some estimates of what, what it would mean in just dollar terms, which I think is what everybody's interested in, or probably many are. So with respect to Article 5, um, if we, if the town were to approve the 1% tax on sales, um, the estimated revenue in 2021 would have been over $36,000 from that, just that one article. Um, and I can share, uh, with respect to the other two, it's a little less clear, um, because the state, the information from the state isn't quite as granular. But we can give you, for example, um, we really don't have good numbers on meals and alcoholic beverages. Uh, I don't even know, Terry, should I share what this is? It's so, it's, it's so low, I'm not sure it's really representative.
Well, if you only get information from the state and half of that, I think...
Right. So at least just based on the information we could pull from the state, it would be in the vicinity of $1,000 to $1,500 of revenue for the town. With respect to, and can I jump and just discuss the other two?
I think it'll help clarify.
Okay, all right. So that's, um, Article 6. Article 7 is the tax on rooms. And, um, just by examining, for example, the rental income from VRBO and Airbnb, and we have it broken out separately, um, rooms that were rented through VRBO would have generated, um, revenue in excess of $4,000?
No, $10,000.
Uh, $10,000? Excuse me, 70% is $10,000. I know, that was in bold, and I still listed. Sorry, Terry. Not, has nothing to do with your Excel file. Um, with respect to Airbnb, it would have been $13,000. So that's, you know, we would be looking at, um, you know, in excess of 20. I think reasonably, we could view ourselves as benefiting to the excess of $20,000 for what is, you know, I don't know, I don't want to make a proponent or the other, but just so that you understand versus how much, um, individuals who would be renting those rooms would have to pay, um, on top of what they already pay in taxes.
So I have a follow-up question.
Andy, I had to stand up first, yes?
Thank you, Greg. With all due respect to the select board and all the hard work that they and we do, I was opposed to any of this. That's all I really have to say. Part of it was because it was a little fuzzy on the, as Jessica just so eloquently, so eloquently explained, I didn't understand the last two things. But I, just any tax increase at our store or for our lower-income citizens, I think we're getting taxed out of here. Any, you know, Vermont's, we're hearing about fuel increases, and, uh, you know, I was just, as a board member, I wasn't that for it at all.
I have here, and then Jeff over there, yes?
Okay. Andy, I'd just like to answer to that, just as an example. So if I spent $40 at the store, I'm only being, paying tax 1% on $40. Is, right? Yes, right. Yes. So 1% of $40 is?
4 cents.
40 cents. So I'm only paying tax on 40 cents.
4 cents.
4 cents. 4 cents. Excuse me.
Okay.
So it's not a lot of money.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Jeff, I'm gonna go Jennifer, and then I'm going Karen.
Jeff, please. Uh, I don't understand. This has nothing to do with food, that the store does it. And beyond that, we're talking about this money going to the general coffees of the town. And it would sound to me like that should reduce the local tax requirement rate. This would go to offset budget costs. So this 1% tax across the board, whatever's being taxed, goes in the general fund and supports town budget, which in turn would reduce the burden on all of us when it comes to voting on the budget again. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and what does it have to do with food?
I have Jennifer, I have here, here, and then here. So let's go here.
Hi, Jennifer Joy Duque. Those figures also don't include any of the inns, B&Bs, or other rentals that are not reported through Airbnb and BRO. The number is much higher. Um, and as an owner and proprietor of an inn, we highly support being able to take in this tax revenue from the people who utilize our town the way they do. This is not impacting us locally or the poor. Believe me, they're not poor. So I just think that we really have to think about what this does for our town and how we can get a little bit more revenue to help support this town that we live in from all the people who come to visit. And they support it too, honestly. They want to pay to support beautiful Jamaica.
Okay, and he is going to be...
Yeah, I clarify.
Clarify. This is clarification. So the reason why we wanted to separate out as much as possible is if you, right, if you support what, for example, what Jennifer just described, you can say yes to Article 7. But you don't necessarily have to say yes to Article 5, which would impose a tax when you go to, um, Forest and Terrace store. So I think it's, as we go through each article, just try to keep in mind that you're voting for a separate tax.
Again, it's clarified. It only, it's not on every item when you go into the store. It's only the taxable items. It's only what you currently pay Vermont state sales tax on. It'd be on your beer and wine, it would be on your toilet paper and things like that, but not on your, your other foods and things.
Okay. This is hot. Here, here, I'm going over to Chrissy, then I think I have Ed, and then I have Chris Clark in the back. Here we are, yes?
Stephanie Amio. Um, thank you for clarifying about the food. That was part of what I wanted to make sure, I didn't think that would be counted. That was part of what I wanted to make sure, I didn't think that would be counted. Um, I, I have a lot of positive feelings about all of these, but my thing I remember from last year, and I want to make sure it gets talked about today, is whether someone had said that when we order anything online, when we order anything online, that that would be taxed. And so, to me, that's like a distinction, it's not only the people that are spending money in town, if that's true. So I wanted to ask that question.
That's Article 5. That is, that is true with respect to Article 5.
Right, and Article 5, right, and just that piece about sales tax would, would impact all of us as we buy things online.
Well, yeah, let me just clarify, what, you pay online for what? I mean, from something in Jamaica, some company in Jamaica, or?
Destination.
Right, so anything you bring from Vermont State Sales Tax on.
Anything that's shipped to Jamaica would get the 1% tax. So anything from Amazon or anything like that.
You pay Vermont tax on that today. It's just this would be in addition.
If you pay Vermont tax on, online.
Right, just for Article 5. Right? Okay, Chrissy here, sorry.
Chrissy Haskins. So, um, Stephanie, thank you for bringing that up. That was something I was going to say also, anything you buy online that is taxable in the state of Vermont is going to be, if you get, if you get shipped, if you get it shipped to your house in Jamaica, your property in Jamaica, it will get the extra 1% sales tax on it. So I ran some numbers so everybody can see what we're looking at here. A lot of comparisons are made to other towns that have the local option tax. Manchester, Wilmington, Rattleboro, and Stratton are some that I found quickly this morning. Manchester brings in, this is sales, meals, rooms, alcohol, all together, because they own all separated out. So Manchester brings in $1,554,000 in their local option tax. Based on their grand list, uh, they apply that to their tax rate to reduce their tax rate. Based on their grand list, they are reducing their tax rate by 13 cents with that. Wilmington brings in $505,000. They do not apply theirs to their tax rate, they do special projects with theirs. Rattleboro brings in $1,469,000, and they apply it to their tax rate that is 12 cents lower on their tax rate. Stratton applies it to their tax rate also, $575,000, that lowers their tax rate by 7 cents, uh, based on their grand list. So if we're talking about $36,000 in sales tax that we would get, that's going to lower our tax rate by .014 cents. If your property costs, if your property's valued at $150,000, that's going to lower your annual taxes by $21. If your property's $300,000, your annual taxes will be lower by $42. So if you're at $150,000 on property value, and you spend $2,000 on taxable items in the entire year, which I'm pretty sure most people spend more than $2,000, that's your $20 right there in your, in your 1% tax. So if you spend $2,000 for the year, you're going to be spending $20 in tax, and there goes your, your, your property tax savings. So just to put that in perspective.
Good. Always our interest is. Chris Clark?
If we adopt Article 5, the other two articles after that.
There is.
Separate.
Separate. And we'll.
But if we, if we adopt Article 5, this one, the one that's across the board, we're not going to, we can't, we can't. We're not going.
It's not across the board, it's just sales, it's just, um, on sales. So that does not include meals and alcoholic beverages, and it does not exclude rooms.
Okay, that's a good clarification.
Good question. I mean, this is not straightforward, so I, I'd like.
Ed, did you have a question?
Um, no, I've got to get, and then I'll be here, here, and over the bottom.
Again, um, I, I, you know, personally for me, I would vote no for 5 and yes for 6 and 7, that's not important. What's important is that, I think, Terry, if you got the numbers, that was what was reported of sales and use tax from Jamaica, which is not necessarily a true figure, right? I mean, that number is way low, because how many of you people put in your tax returns that you went to Manchester to buy things and paid a tax for Vermont?
No.
So, you know, I can tell you right now that we, as the inn, probably produce $36,000 for the sales tax, about 1% of the things that we have. Um, and that includes.
You better not.
When you, when the UBS guy has lunch at your property, there's a problem.
It does.
So anyway, so, yeah, I understand, I don't want to pay that 1% tax, additional tax for all the Amazon purchases we use, because, you know, Love Forest and Tara, they don't really have all the things that everyone needs, you kind of have. So, um, it, it makes sense for 6 and 7, you know, alcohol, they, you know, send tax, I'm willing to pay that 1%. Um, and, you know, meals, again, 1%. There's only certain items in, in, what's your name? There's honey pie, there's, well, bragging, there's family fish, and then there's our place, that you pay 1% in our place, it's included in the price, so gee, I get to lose that 1% there for now. Um, and I probably have talked enough, or Jeff talked enough about rooms. In addition, for those of you who live in the village, think about all the dog poop that's everywhere from Airbnb people not picking up their stuff, the parking that goes everywhere, and the extra noise that goes on from all their Airbnb. So it's not like a nice, comfortable inn where we have rules and regulations, Airbnb is kind of a room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
CJ, did I read Joel, you had your hand up? There was one other person, we'll get there. Yeah, CJ?
Yeah, I'm just trying to remind you to remember, uh, what's, so what's not taxable is food, clothing?
No, clothing is not taxable.
So if I, if I go to, what's the provisions?
Groceries are not taxable, but deli is?
Office.
Okay.
If they make the sandwich.
So if they, if they just plate you a half pound of ham, it's not taxed. If they made a sandwich, it's considered prepared meal and that just falls under the meals.
What's their priority?
On what?
79%. Okay, okay. Keep it on the floor here. Joel?
Joel, um, does this pertain to services? Plumbing? Sales tax?
Of course, I mean, that's not, but there is.
No, sales tax does apply to services. In Vermont, they just pass it above that. We, we need to talk about that.
Not individuals, I think businesses pay sales tax, but individuals.
Oh, sorry, once again, this is.
Like fuel, if you're a business, you pay sales tax on that fuel, but if you're an individual homeowner, you do not pay sales tax.
Yeah, we pay sales tax.
This is why, when you look at the printed edition of the Tax Code in Vermont, you'll never get through. And this is exactly why, it's all this minutia. There was somebody over here I could believe, yeah, oh, Paul, yes.
Yeah, Paul, for example, I just want to get clarity, last thing, Chrissy makes me think every time I listen to her.
I'm sorry.
That's good.
Exactly. And the question comes up, if we're getting oil delivered to our house, personal oil, you're suggesting it is not taxed?
No, sales tax.
Sales tax.
Oil.
Yeah.
I think that's an oil tax.
Yeah, it's different.
There's no tax on oil.
But there is a tax.
For, if it's not.
So the question is, is there a sales tax on oil for individuals?
Yes. And the question then comes, if we're purchasing it in Jamaica? Or outside of Jamaica for delivery, the tax is the same, correct? Whether it's code and coda or.
Correct.
Okay. Now, you're suggesting that the, if I understood what's happening, I may have it wrong, because I'm going to be in the heart of it, you know, what you're saying. So I'd like you to repeat everything you just said. Okay, completely understood. So this, as it reads now, Article 5, as the sales tax pursuant, would include any sales taxes on other items, such as you said before, anything we bring in from Amazon, anything comes off the internet, we're going to get taxed on. Correct? Am I correct?
And you're paying 6% on the.
That's correct. So this 1% would be added on to that.
Correct.
And the question then is whether we're getting taxed on the oil. We're not getting taxed on it.
Not, or the.
What's that? Okay. Chrissy, so we're, we're kind of getting frazzled here, and I understand why.
That's our business.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Um, one of the main things that is produced in our town is lumber and timber, I just like to say that was kind of a big deal to this.
Sure, that is taxable, right, correct, lumber? So that's, that 1% of all the lumber.
I just want to correct that services are not subject to the sales tax. Just tangible personal property, so, no.
Yes, Nelson, I go back to Chrissy.
Nelson Cole, I just have one question. On all this internet sales, who's responsible sending in the 1%? In other words, the company you're ordering, if you're ordering from some company in California, they're not going to charge you the 1%. Is that the individual's responsibility at that point to keep track of all that?
Yes. For example, if you utilize Amazon as your seller, Amazon collects it from the end purchaser.
Or 6%.
The 6%, but then, if, but this 1% would be added to the 6%, it would be collected in the same manner, is my understanding.
Yeah, it's, it's the vendor's responsibility to collect sales tax.
Right.
At any level.
I'm trying to, just go to Erica, because she hasn't spoken yet, and then I'll go to Chrissy.
Um, Erica, I just want to ask, this tax includes not just the village of Jamaica, but all of Jamaica, right? So stores like the Cape Sport and the Started G, and all of these big ski shops?
Yes.
That generate a lot of tax are also included in that sales tax, it's not just our own Amazon purchases.
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, Chrissy?
Okay, two things. One, um, I was just provided an answer, I think. Heating, oil, gas, and other fuels used for commercial purposes are subject to 6% sales and use tax, but not when used in the home, if that helps.
No, it still doesn't.
So what I wanted to say was, uh, that most of the towns that do this thing, lots of tax, are doing it to subsidize their tax rate. They're doing it because they have larger economies, and they have people that are not property owners, not residents in town, that are coming into town to buy things. And so those people from out of town are subsidizing that town's property taxes. Um, that's what Manchester's doing, that's what, you know, Rattleboro and Stratton are doing. They're subsidizing their property taxes using money from people out of town. We don't have a big enough economy to really subsidize our property taxes, um, from out-of-town purchases for sales tax.
How do you get them?
Uh, yeah, that is a clarification question, so.
I'm curious how you're breaking down the sales of local versus people coming through, and that's not what I see.
So just based on, you go to Manchester, and Manchester has, um, there are tons, and they have, they have hundreds of retail stores in Manchester, Rattleboro is the same way. You go up to Stratton, they have the whole village up there, people are spending lots of money, that are mostly out of state, they're visitors. Um, Manchester has a lot of people from other towns surrounding them coming in and purchasing thing, things there. We don't have a whole lot of that here in Jamaica.
But if you're dealing per capita? Right. In the summer, when the Airbnbs are flying, the park is open, we generally have much more volume of sale for people coming here. In the winter, I would say slimmer, but per capita, I think still a significant chunk, if you include, including honey pie, including, you know, everything out by Roxtonville. I mean, I just think it depends on your, on your perspective of where you want to tax.
And I'm just on the sales.
And I, that's what I'm talking about, too.
Okay, okay, good. Hope this has clarified our votes. Uh, are there any other questions?
Follow-up question, John, can we?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, one, Article 7, when we get there to vote on it, it was the tax on rooms. Does that include people who rent here or on?
That is for Article 7.
I know, but that's a question, does that include, that's about?
But that's Article 7, we're on Article 5. So when we get to talk about it, I'm. Okay, so what you're asking is, what is in Article 7 also part of Article 5 under the taxing?
Where, it doesn't?
I believe six months or less.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's considered short-term.
Okay. Uh, yes?
Can I move to discussion and vote?
That's exactly what I was waiting for. The question has been called. Do we have a second? All right, I need two-thirds of the body who want to call the question. All in favor of calling your question, raise your hand. Very good, we go on. Now we're going to vote on this. How do you want to vote on this? We can do it.
Paper.
Paper. I need seven hands for paper, all right? It's all right. Hands for paper? What do I got? I've got seven. Okay. Okay, yes vote says you want the tax to be implemented, the 1% tax.
This is just for Article 5.
Just for Article 5. Then, if you don't want that 1% tax, vote no.
Got it.
And then we'll go on to the next two. And we're going to do, that's purple, blue. Okay, go for it.
So what he's done, right?
Okay. Article number five, we're bidding, 38 votes. One ballot was spoiled, there were 23 yeses and 47 no's. The article is defeated. Which means we can move on to the next tax article. All right, now everybody has their paper, green, uh, orange paper. Still don't have?
Yeah, still don't have.
Who doesn't have?
All right. Who doesn't have more paper to vote with? Raise your hand, and we'll put around and get it. Oh, you're trying to select.
Oh, no.
Okay, so, I'm going to move on to article number 6. Shall the town assess a 1% tax on meals and alcoholic beverages pursuant to 24 VSA, section 130? I'd like to see this thing, actually.
So move.
Uh, so move, second?
Second.
All right, we are now discussing, 100%, shall the town assess a 1% tax on meals and alcoholic beverages? I want to make one observation, I know it is new. We could brave for lunch, but my suggestion is, let's try and do this till 1:05 and finish up.
Yes.
If we brave for lunch, we're going to lose half the town.
Yes.
But we got 10% now.
Yes, so let's discuss Article 6. Yes, Rob? I say, we've kind of already discussed it. Let's, um, move to vote on it.
Okay. Okay. I agree.
Uh, okay, I get, if I get two-thirds of the floor who want to just vote on this, all in favor of just moving to a vote, please raise your hand.
Aye.
That doesn't look like two-thirds. Um, okay, we want to count? So we count, I don't count.
What, two-thirds?
That's one each, the other one, see?
All right, who, uh, hands down, who doesn't want to move directly to a vote on Article 6? All right. All right. Here's the next thing. We could do this by voice vote, or you could do it by a paper ballot. Do I have seven people who want to go to a paper ballot?
We just passed all these.
I need seven hands.
Voice.
We got three. We're going to do a voice vote. All those in favor of Article 6, say yes.
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 Phew, okay. All those not in favor, please say no.
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 The article passes. Which means we can move on to Article 7. Shall the town assess a 1% tax on rooms pursuant to 24 VSA, 128, all that.
Move the question.
Uh, no, I have, oh, you moved the question second?
Second.
I'm losing myself here. Discussion. I say that we've already had a discussion, and we should just go to a voice vote. All right, very good. All, all not in favor, please raise your hand.
Not in favor of what?
Not in favor of discussing this. Oh, no, sorry. Not in favor of the voice vote. All those in favor, not in favor of the voice vote, please raise your hand.
No, 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 it's not in favor of discussing the question.
He moved, he moved to vote.
Okay.
And also added.
All right, do people want to vote on this by voice?
Yes.
Those who don't want to go to.
Wait a minute, you have to finish the discussion.
We have to vote on what's.
Some people want to still discuss.
It was moved that we go directly to a vote.
And then you have.
It was seconded. Now I ask.
No. Discussion's over.
No, now you have to vote, I, I have like two-thirds of the body. Do you want to close discussion? Everybody wants to close discussion, raise your hands. Thank you, hands down. Those who don't want to close discussion, raise your hands. Discussion is closed, we move on to the voice vote. Do you want to do the voice vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Does that, do I have seven people who might want to do it by paper ballot? Anybody want to vote by paper ballot? No. Therefore, we go on to the question. Article number 7, shall the town assess 1% taxes on rooms pursuant to 24 VSA? All in favor of said article, please say aye.
Aye.
All who, say no.
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 Abstentions. You pass Article 7, thank you for your. Thank you for staying through with that. Article number 8, to see what sum of money the voters will vote to pay the town's running expenses and how it will be collected. Usually, we have Bonnie West here.
I know.
So, do we have a piece of paper?
We do, but I haven't filled it in. We've filled out the numbers.
Well, we need the numbers. No vote.
Is this a 1.8? On the bottom of it?
What page?
Page 17.
17.
1.8.
Look at one, page 17.
Bottom number.
So.
1.857830.
Okay, so the amount would be... Whoa, is that, that's a million, right?
Hey, wait, whoa, Jess.
Um, Carol Campbell, we were just talking, what we just asked about the taxes, when would that go into effect?
Next. Next year.
Whoa.
Move.
Yes, okay, so that answers that question. Now we're back to, we need numbers, and also there is that, uh, how to be collected. I don't remember how that's worded.
By taxes.
By taxes, but with the late fees and...
I threw it off last year.
Oh, that's a good idea. Somebody want to put that together? I'm just the moderator. Yes.
I'm in here. I got it.
Okay.
If things change in the destruction, that means you'll return.
Right. Right. But at least let's get a base number to start with.
So, I move that we raise the number 1.857830 by taxation, collected in October, or whatever, collected out of law.
Due as of October 1st with 8% penalty after due date. It's all this verbiage.
It's on page 11.
Page 11.
Here we go. To raise the sum of 1.360,558 dollars, which is a different, oh, oh, yes. So that's in the first column there. Because the last column that Ed was looking at was for 2024, correct? 24. So, I'm confused. Why are we adopting a budget from 2022 with that number?
We're not.
Yeah, you're right. Are you reading, you're reading last year's?
Yeah, sure.
Right, and that's what she has here.
You substitute it with this year's.
Yeah, we need 2024.
All right, let's try this again. As you can tell, I'm not an accountant. Never pretend to be. Okay, to raise the sum of 1,336,000, wait, $558 by taxation for the running expenses of the town, and this along with accepted, except anticipated receipts of 500,21 dollars and 272, oh, 521,272 dollars equal a budget of 1.857,830 dollars to be expended. Taxes will be paid to the treasurer on or before October 2nd, 2023, with an 8% penalty added by state law on October 3rd, 2023. Plus interest at the rate of 1% will be added monthly starting December 1st until paid in full. Got it? The first number is 1,336,558 dollars. And then the anticipated receipts was 521,272 dollars, which would then make your budget 1,857,830 dollars, with the attendant taxes when they're due and the percentages for being late.
So moved.
So moved. Discussion? That's where we are now. Discussion?
Close discussions.
Called.
Call the question?
Call the question.
You got a second for that?
Second.
All right, we can move on. I have to restate the article. Everybody got the article?
Yes.
It's right here, if they want to see it.
It's on page 15.
Yeah, so all in favor, Article 8. All in favor of said budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? So passed.
Take a drink of water.
One o'clock can't come quick.
Oh.
All right, now then, we're moving on to Article 9. Correct?
Yes.
Let me find it. Yeah, okay. To see if the voters will authorize the select board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes.
I move for the select board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Move question. Close discussion.
Questions proposed. All those in favor of Article number 9. To see if the voters will authorize the select board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Number 9 is passed. Number 10. Shall the voters authorize the select board to spend unanticipated funds such as grants, gifts, and/or interest?
Move the question.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Close discussions.
Discussion's been closed. All in favor of Article number 10. Shall the voters authorize the select board to spend unanticipated funds such as grants, gifts, and/or interest? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Number 10 is passed. To set the time for the opening of the next annual town meeting to be held on the first Tuesday in 2024.
Move to hold the town meeting the first Tuesday at 10:00 AM on March 23rd.
What is the date? Is it the 5th next year?
Yeah.
So it would be the 5th of March, opening at 10:00 AM.
Oh, wait, I'm gonna...
Wait.
Do math.
Can't stop.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
Um, I think we need to come up with a better way. There's 10, or less than 10% of our town here right now. This isn't working.
Get a state, call it in.
There are other towns that do it. I need to do it on the weekend. There's something better.
That is something that can be brought up to the select board. What we're doing with this one was we're setting it now for next year. If there's a change, they can go to the select board and they can debate it there. But the floor is now for this date, the 5th of March, 2027, 24, at 10:00 AM.
It doesn't say the date.
We have always set the time. So, any more discussion? Sue, you had your...
No, I have the same question.
Okay, very good.
Call the question.
Call the question. All in favor of calling a question, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are in favor of setting the time for next year's annual meeting for March 5th, 2024 at 10:00 AM, please say aye.
Aye.
Close?
No.
Okay, we got some no's, but ayes win. Okay, so we move on to Article 12. Article 12, to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting. What I want to let people know is, this is, no voting goes on. Only articles that have been warned can be voted on. This is informational, this is announcements, this is public concerns that you might want to address to the select board, but nothing will be voted on. Now, I saw, hand out there, I saw CJ and then I saw Rob Willis.
Hi CJ, I'm back to the, the, the sales tax. So, oh, I think, never mind. Because it would only be the sales tax that we could specify what it would be used for. Is that correct? Or can we also specify what the income for alcohol and rooms could be used for? The question was brought up about the sidewalk clearing. How does that proceed? And are those two funds available?
Any one of those funds is available. It's in the general fund and it could come before the select board to say, what do we want to use it for? I mean, we obviously have a budget set, but within that, there is some movement of things around it. And to address, I mean, not to digress too much, but to address Ed's point, I mean, there certainly is issues with the sidewalks. And I believe that we've, I mean, my feeling is that we've got money in some capital reserve funds if we want to look at purchasing a new piece of equipment, um, you know, from the sidewalk fund possibly and things like that. So there's some other ways that we can work within our...
Does the town need an order to vote on spending that money if they've spent the money?
It would have to be an article. So, but the thing is, the discussion for anything budgetary has to start at the select board. So start there and then go through the process.
Right, but you can request it if you want it to be addressed at a select board meeting. Just request from the chair that it be added to the agenda.
Yes, and that's something else people should know. If you have an issue that you want to bring up before the select board, get in touch with them beforehand so that they can put it on their warning because they legally need to do that. Okay? Um, I'm sorry. Oh, I had Rob Willis and then over here.
So, just a reminder that all dog license fees are due as of April 1st. And if you see people that are new to town that don't know this, it's state law requires that you license your dog and have proof of rabies by April 1st every year. Otherwise, after a short period of time, we can fine you for not doing it. So.
Very good. I have Dave here, then I'll go here, and then here, and then here, and then here. Okay, good. Let's start back there.
My name's Dave Marks. I'll try to get this quick. I'm the vice chairperson of the Jamaica Area Mountain Bike Alliance. We actually have a couple of other board members who are here. And Dan is the chairperson. Dan Hamid is, Hamid is our treasurer. And George Abraham is here as well. We formed in 2019 originally to establish mountain bike trails in Jamaica State Park. That project is in planning stages. Additionally, we have entered into what is referred to as a challenged partnership agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers to establish trails of All Mountain Lake. Our first trail was completed in October of last year, and we will be having a ribbon cutting ceremony to formally open it on June 2nd at 2:00 PM at All Mountain Lake. We'd love to see everybody there, whether you're into mountain biking or not. Corps of Engineers has been really wonderful and supportive. We have a second trail that we have approval to build that we hope to raise sufficient funds to build starting in spring, and we hope to have a lot more trails established there. We are in the process of trying to establish trails in other parts of town and also in adjacent towns, private and public land. We hope to have weekly group rides starting this coming spring. The trail of All Mountain Lake that we do have will need to dry out. Hopefully, soon before we can ride it so that it can be sustainably ridden long term. If you or anyone else you know is interested in learning more about our organization or becoming involved, or if you know any private landowners who might be interested in having a trail on their land, either in town and nearby, we'd love to hear from you. I have some more information on how to become connected with us. I actually have some really cool cards that Greg Joll is a better press secretary at some point in time. Does he have our email address? Thanks. I think that's it. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
All right, now, I have a flurry of people. Is somebody in here? Yes.
I wanted to ask Rob, just to confirm, there's still leash law in the town of Jamaica, is that correct?
Yes.
And if people's dogs are wandering town awfully, should we call you?
Yes, we're calling them.
Or the town.
Call it town.
The town.
Very good. Um, yes, over here.
I have a follow-up for this. I request that we get signage that says leash, dogs have to be leashed and poop has to be picked up all through town, past the state park I'm gonna have you because I've paid over $3,000 for my, my dog being bit by other dogs who were probably even out of town. And I asked somebody that I know was out of town to please leash your dog, and they said, I don't see any, any sign where there's leash. And there's none at all in the town anywhere. So I would request that.
Very good. And I remind people that just ignorance is a lot, just me, you can break it. But yeah, Rob will be the person to get in contact with that. I had some announcements. Karen?
I have a couple of things. I'm a Lister and Val Cantor are over here, and Pat Melman were a Lister. And so what we do is assess properties in town. But we are driving out on a regular basis every week. So you may see us drive into your driveway and wonder who that is, but we do have signs on the side of the, of the vehicles. We may get out of our vehicles to measure and, and things like that. But anything else to add to that, Val?
No.
Okay. And my other thing is, we have a little paper on the Jamaica Historical Foundation over there. We are taking on Jamaica Old Home Day this year. It's set for Saturday, September 16th. Things look like they're coming into play. And we'll have local musicians, parade, metal protecting, which will be fun right in the village here. Kids activities, American Legion band, bed race, delicious food vendors, lots of history things. Rob and Erica are going to do a, what should we call it?
Escape.
For Jamaica Village, which will be free for everyone to do on Jamaica Day.
An escape room?
In the town. So that'll be fun. Anyway, if you want to help with that or want to help with the Historical Foundation, please let us know. There's a list of, of our board members and members on here. So, thank you.
Um, just a quick question. Last year, we voted for the select board to spend some $25,000 as a salary for a town administrator. Whatever happened with that?
Thank you for that segue. I'd like to introduce Mike Tuller. He's over in the corner there. Mike came on for late December, I think, maybe early December, late November, sometime around then. He's working a couple days a week. He's taken a lot of time to familiarize himself with the town and with different projects and needs. He's been tremendously helpful so far to help, helping us sort through a lot of the federal funding, the ARPA grants and things like that, helping us prioritize some of these projects. So he's jumped right on, jumped right into the transfer station, just going through a recertification, annual, not annual, but every 10 years that's necessary. So there's a lot of that kind of stuff that he's already been working on and been a tremendous help already. So, good question.
Did you care, Steve, just to let people know who you are?
He didn't see him.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see him.
Monday and Thursday? Monday and Thursday.
Very good. Is there anybody else up here? Ah, yes, sir.
Derek Oms. I just wanted to mention, with the, thinking of fundraisers, the Farm Board is going to do a dam release in the spring again, possibly fall. And I know Westvest used to be a big event for the town. Some people like it, some people don't, but it's a good, good opportunity to generate funds. And with the spring release, it is already announced, and I know paddling companies are planning to come here, so it might be an opportunity to in some way capitalize on that. It's the first weekend in May, then there'll be a lot of paddlers coming into the town. On my end, I'm going to try to put out messages to paddling groups to say, be respectful. And if there's any guidance that you want to pass on, I'm happy to do that. And on our end, if there are things that we should capitalize on, all these people coming into town, those that weekend. And then there'll be a weekend in September. I'm not sure what, if it's guaranteed yet or not. But the May weekend is advertised and, you know, it's close.
It's the first weekend in May?
Yeah, I think it's 6 and 7, or 5 and 6.
Good, thank you. Other announcements? Yes, Kristi?
Just a quick update on our town's wastewater project. So I'm the engineer for the project, and I'm speaking on behalf of our wastewater committee. So we are still moving forward. The town has awarded $66,500 in grant to continue with feasibility. So we are moving on on that. We were hopeful to have a report done by the end of December, but with this extra money that we got, we're doing some extra work and just going a little bit further into feasibility on it. So once the snow melts, we can get some of our extra field work done, and then we can finalize our concepts and get some costs together. And then we'll be doing some public outreach. We'll have some meetings. We'll be able to give everybody, you know, an idea of what we're looking at here in terms of who this could serve and what those costs might be. Any questions, feel free to reach out to me or Brian Ziroff, who's the chair of the planning commission. He is on the committee as well. Patrick, Jason Pass, so, and Greg. So reach out to any of us if you have questions.
Hey, yes, sir. Hi, I'm David. I live up by Pike's Falls. And it's more of a tone that I want people to think about for a second. Pike's Falls on a nice day in August can have 50 cars up there. If each car has three people, you do the math. It's a small swivel, much half the size of this room. On Fridays, I drive the school bus down to Manchester. And on Friday afternoons, I can see these cars coming up, just hundreds of cars coming up that road. And, you know, that's just the way it is in Vermont. We're lucky we live in such a beautiful place. I think we need to be careful as a town of saying things like Airbnb people, or the people who come up on weekends, the second homeowners. They're all part of the community. They just aren't here today. And there's a bit of an open acceptance that we sort of say things like that. And I'd like us to, as a town, to be more aware that if you live in a beautiful place, it's going to happen. And our job is not to say bad things behind your back or feel that we have a right to do that. So think about it, if you can. Because I hear it all the time. It surprises me. The other people we get derogatorily referred to are snowboarders, but that's a whole different discussion. And that seems to be well accepted in the ski resort, but, and I'm a snowboarder. But so just, let's try to have the town think about that as a kind of part of our, we accept people.
Thank you. Any other? Oh, one more, not more.
Sorry. Library hours have changed, and you may not be aware of it, because our website is under construction right now. We're open Mondays 10 to 6, Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3 to 7, and Saturday from 10 to 1. I'm also available. You can email me. You can email me, uh, call me. I'm happy to have input and volunteers and programming help. Uh, I know that's already been stated, but I'm really excited to meet you and I hope that you'll come and see me at the library.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, wait a minute, whoa! We're stealing the article! Oh, let's shut the articles out.
Can we stop talking?
Yes. Okay. Second that? Somebody seconded it? All right. All in favor of getting out of this article, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
Motion to adjourn.
I haven't stated the article yet. Okay. Article 13, motion to adjourn. Second? Okay, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Opposed? Go home and thank you!
Thank you, sir.